Call this meeting the Fremont County Board of Commissioners to order a special meeting. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner Norden.
Present.
Commissioner Bell.
Present.
Commissioner Payne.
Present.
County Clerk Barr.
Present.
County Attorney Jackson.
Present.
County Manager Suckers.
Present.
Planning and zoning director Coke.
Present.
The special meeting called specifically today for the consideration of the renewal of three medical marijuana licenses. This is the first annual review for these licenses since the board previously approved them. To give those in attendance an idea of what kind of format this board will follow, we are reviewing the record of performance of each of these applicants to determine whether they are in position to get their annual renewal. And the record that we review involves whatever complaints may have been lodged against the licensees over the past year, any investigations based upon our county regulations and conditions for each of those licensees by either the code enforceable officers from the planning and zoning department or perhaps from Detective Burton from the Fremont County Sheriff's Department. The individual agenda items on each of the licensee reviews do not involve a public hearing, so we are not taking public comment because if there were any complaints specifically alleged violations, those should have been lodged with the Department of Planning and Zoning prior to today. So we will be hearing no public comments specifically towards any of the licensees. The first agenda item, license for consideration.
We need approval of agenda.
Okay.
Which I will so move.
Second.
Okay, we have three items on today's agenda. Yeah, I'd say we have three items on the agenda. I have a motion and second to approve the agenda as presented. Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Payne.
Aye.
Commissioner Bell.
Aye.
Commissioner Norden.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. First item up for consideration for license renewal is JMC Enterprises conducting a medical marijuana center pharmacy located at 1505 Elm Street along Highway 115 in Lincoln Park. Dana Sue is the applicant. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Dana Sue was unable to make it. I'm Jeffrey Kane, the owner.
Jeffrey Kane?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Record will reflect that Jeffrey Kane represents the applicant. Do you want to say anything in opening remarks regarding the application for renewal?
No, sir. We had a good year. No violations, no problems, no break-ins. And basically, everything seems to be going very smooth.
Okay. Mr. Coke, department review and if you would give us a review of whatever was anticipated or conditions on this license when originally adopted.
All right. They did make all the submittal requirements. Just a few comments. There are no medical marijuana centers, drug or alcohol treatment, rehabilitation facilities, public community centers, or publicly owned or maintained buildings for use to the general public in public or private schools, principal campuses of college, university, or seminary, public park, or playgrounds, and licensed residential care facilities within 1,000 feet of this location. The lighting outside the building as well as the sign are turned off after closing time, which is 7:00 PM. They do have proof of water, which is not required for this location. The signage on the property is in compliance with the regulations, and an onsite inspection has revealed that the facility is consistent with the information provided in the application. With this new renewal, there are no items for consideration or contingencies. On the original approval, we're all the same, basically the same department comments. And I guess I do apologize, I just read you the previous one. The new one, the new review for the renewal, there are two items for consideration or contingencies that will need to be met prior to issuance of the license. The first one is a state license renewed from the state, license 402-00157 that expired 11/25/2015. And you may already have that in, but that is a requirement.
Yes, sir. I'm actually waiting for them to mail that down. I brought a letter of continuance in and submitted that until the state has provided the actual documentation.
Okay. And then the second one would be a renewed occupational license for number 11530 and M00321. We'll need those as well.
Yes, sir. Those are both coming with the state license.
Okay. Other than that, everything else is sufficient?
Okay, and also for the record, on agenda review and as part of the record put together by the planning and zoning department, we have a letter from Detective Burton as far as a record of any state violations or county violations that were investigated through the Fremont County Sheriff's Department. And Detective Burton's letter notes that the Sheriff's Department has received no direct complaints or violations regarding these premises. I guess State Enforcement Division investigators have reviewed those premises several times. Detective Burton, you want to add anything other than what is on the record for your letter?
No, sir. Everything that they had on all the state violations, they got to, they got to take care of.
Okay. And we remind ourselves as a board that while we are certainly interested in knowing what kind of inspections and investigations the state may have carried out, the licensing at the county level primarily involves the land use issues and the conditions that we set as a board on the original license. Any questions of the applicant or Mr. Coke?
No, I believe this is probably our most straightforward application that we'll be seeing this morning. I have no questions.
Again, this will be for a one-year license renewal as required in the county regulations. It comes up for annual review.
Mr. Chair, you ready for a motion?
I am.
Make a motion that we approve MMC 14-001 for JMC Enterprises Medical Marijuana Center with the two contingencies that Mr. Coke stated with the state licenses and the occupational licenses.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to renew the license for JMC Enterprises Medical Marijuana Center Pharmacy for another one-year period. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Payne.
Aye.
Commissioner Bell.
Aye.
Commissioner Norden.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, sir, for appearing. Next on the agenda is consideration of today's healthcare LLC, optional premises cultivation and commercial greenhouse operation located at 934 C Street in the Beaver Park, Penrose area, on the east side of C Street. And we have representing on the record either Natalie Remol or Angela Morton. And you, sir, are...
My name is Kyle Winland. Neither one of them could make it this morning.
Say your name again, Kyle.
Kyle Winland.
Okay, would you fill out a slip so that the clerk has the correct spelling of your name for the record?
Right now.
No, you can fill it out afterwards. Go ahead and make any opening comments regarding your license renewal.
I don't know if you want to get into the details that you guys need from me at this time or if you guys have questions for me. There was a couple of things that were brought to our attention a month ago and received this letter. The first item was a, Don Moore had stopped by to visit our facility and had stated that there was some drainage issues on the property. Our contractor was who the email was sent to. He replied to Don Moore and said that the issues would be addressed. Upon speaking to Don Moore last night, he said there was a couple more things that need to be fixed on our drainage issues, which will be addressed today. They're very minor. It's just a couple wattles, which is erosion control that need to be installed on a retention pond as well as a drainage swell from the entrance of our property. Another thing was, we have had a couple of complaints on odor mitigation. We've had three site inspections for our odor mitigation control, which is approved by an engineer and signed off on. On every visit that they've made, the odor mitigation has been in place and effective. There's a letter that I believe you guys had received from a neighbor that has multiple complaints about times and dates that she had...
You do have a copy of that?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, I want to make sure you did.
And upon inspection of that, there is another greenhouse that does not have any walls. It's pretty much an outdoor grow. It's really close to her property. And I believe that's where the majority of the smell is coming from. I can't prove that, but being that our odor mitigation is approved and signed off on by an engineer and has been effective in our opinion, I just want to kind of relay to you guys that there is neighboring grows that do not have walls in their outdoor grows that are probably the majority of the odor coming from the, to her property.
The three site inspections, that's with the state?
Excuse me?
The three site inspections that you just talked about, was that was from the state?
I believe so, yes, sir.
So clarify again, when you said the greenhouse without any walls?
So there's a greenhouse, I'm not sure if it's a medical grow or if it's a caregiver, but it's located basically right across the street from her property.
But it's not part of your license?
It's not, no. It's actually, that greenhouse is closer to her property than ours is to her property. And it does not have any type, they just put up privacy fencing and there is no walls. There's no odor mitigation on this grow. I believe that's the majority of the smell.
Okay, unless the board has other questions, the applicant, right now we'll hear from Mr. Coke and review some of the odor complaints.
That's fine.
All right. The applicant did make all the required submittals. As he stated, there were several complaints of odor concerns in the area. Fremont County Code Enforcement did visit the site on several times. I personally visited the site on several times. When we first got the first concern about the odor, we did notice that there was a strong odor outside the building. We contacted the facility manager at that time and they showed us and told us that they hadn't been running due to some concerns or what have you. They got it operational again. We did make several other site visits.
Matt, can you be specific to any dates or at least time periods that those took place?
Yes. The original inspection was 6/17/2015. That's when we did detect the odor outside the building. We did receive another complaint, let's see here, 7/15. We did a drive-by. Code enforcement did a drive-by on the property and to the property. They did not notice an odor at that time. On October 21st, they did another inspection of the property. At that time, they did not notice an odor at that time as well. We went back out on October 22nd after receiving a voicemail and reviewed the site one more time and did not notice the odor at that time either. There were several other attempts to be made by Code Enforcement during the off-hours by one of our staff that lives in the Penrose area, and they did not notice any noticeable odors at that time. I was out in Penrose, I believe in October, approximately 8 o'clock in the evening, and the odor was very strong to the north and east. Couldn't say if it was coming directly from this property, this location, or if it was coming from another location, but it was very, very strong. So there is a concern of odor in the area. Whether it's coming from this one or not, it's unsure, but our inspections of the site do indicate that the odor mitigation appears to be working when we have made those inspections. The only concern or question I would have is if it is running 24 hours a day. Are there times when you shut it off or does it consistently run?
It consistently runs. It's basically a mist that every time, it doesn't consistently run. What happens is we have exhaust fans, so it's environmentally controlled. As soon as the temperature reaches a certain parameter, it kicks on the exhaust fan which sucks air from the outside through the greenhouse, outside the greenhouse. And when those fans kick on, every time those fans kick on, the odor mitigation sprays a mist into the air that's exiting the greenhouse. So they're only on when the fans are sucking air out of the greenhouse into the atmosphere.
Okay, so you're really not filtering the air? You're actually just perfuming the air? Is that what you're doing?
Yeah, it's, we're, it's what was approved by the state and what we were, there's really no way to filter it. So it is actually perfuming the air. It's killing the odor that's coming from the greenhouse.
Okay, what are you putting into the air?
It's called ONA. It's a, it just masks smell that kills any odors. It's kind of like a sorbise, but it's made for commercial greenhouses.
Does it have a specific odor?
It does not, no.
Okay. All right, and continuing the review, there are the additional items and like he stated, the county building department did review the project. Originally, there were quite a few. There were nine items of conditions and considerations. The majority of those dealing with the building permit itself. Majority of those have been taken care of. With regards to the drainage, I believe that Don Moore did note, and he sent us an email regarding that specifically wattles and some rocks need to be placed for the drainage concerns. And like you stated, you will be taking care of those.
It'll be done by the end of the day.
Okay. And then we'll have to have Don Moore review that to make sure they were positioned properly.
I spoke with Don, saying to come out as soon as they call in and let him know. Hopefully, the site is connected.
Okay. And then number two would be the odor mitigation, making sure that it is running consistently and serving the purpose that it needs to. Number three would be proof that all occupational licenses are valid and up to date. And then number three, a copy of a detailed plan for training of employees and staff. We don't have a good detailed idea or report of what you do to train your staff in our file, so if you could get that.
Natalie's will be back on Monday, and she has that documentation ready to go in tomorrow.
All right. Other than that, that's all the concerns the department has.
Matt, initially a question. You indicated an October 22 inspection and...
I take that back. That's when we left a voicemail to the complainant stating that everything was running fine.
Okay. I guess I was under the impression that you had reacted to a voicemail complaint.
No, we left a mail.
Left them a voicemail.
Yes.
Okay. So I guess what I'm asking is, from the letter from Claire Shipman that detailed these times and dates, did she file those dates and complaints with you previously other than this January 6th letter?
No, Claire's been good about calling us to let us know when there's specific times, you know, when she's noticed them the night before or several days before. I don't believe she's called on every one of these. But we did originally, when she made the first complaint, we did make an attempt to rectify it through that. And then we have been policing it since then.
Okay, so when you did get a complaint from her, did Code Enforcement officers go out? Or you, I think you indicated you'd gone out too yourself?
Yes, yes. When we received a valid, good complaint, we would go out and visit the site.
All right, I guess the thrust of my question is, do you feel the department has been responsive to the complaints that you've received over the last year regarding odors?
I believe so, yes.
Other questions from the board of Matt or the applicant?
I do have a question for the applicant concerning the way that you just explained your odor mitigation system, is that if you have fans that only kick on at a certain temperature and that's the only time that odor mitigation is going to be running, what about the rest of the time?
The greenhouses are a sealed environment. When you have CO2 involved in an indoor grow environment, you want it to be completely sealed where there's no air coming in or out. So when the fans are off, there is no air that is leaving or entering the building. So there's not a, any air that can release odor into the environment unless the fans are being kicked on. There's flaps that close the wet walls, so it completely seals up the greenhouses themselves.
And how often does the system actually run, or the fans?
During the summer, all day long. They barely have a break during the winter time. They probably kick on every five minutes for about maybe one to two minutes at a time.
So that would be the same then for the shoulder seasons, for fall and spring? They're running at least every five minutes for a couple of minutes?
There's about four months out of the year that the fans don't really kick on, that the heaters are actually running inside during, so the other nine months out of the year, they're basically running all day, every day.
On the drainage issues, we see in this on number one for items of consideration, compliance with the Fremont County Building Department on outstanding items noted from an email of Don Moore dated May 13th, 2015, but yet we're just now getting to the drainage issues to take care of?
So what happened there was the, Don Moore had emailed our contractor. I was not included on the email myself. He did state that Don Moore did have some issues and that he had addressed them. I recently spoke with the contractor. We're not, being that we're all completed, we don't really have too much communication anymore. But even when I talked to him a week ago, he said that he had employees on-site when Don Moore came by and they were addressed at that time. So he had addressed the issues. Don Moore did a site visit three weeks ago and said that there still are some issues with it, which we will address. But it was my understanding that within a week of Don Moore sending this email to our contractor, that all the concerns have been addressed.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, one other note, right before the meeting, just a few minutes before, we did get a verbal comment. One of the neighbors did complain about loud music as well coming from the facility. Do you have stereos playing or...
They do have small, I don't, the last thing I want to do is, when I want to be a good neighbor to everybody, I'll make sure that there's no music played whatsoever. I apologize for that.
Part of the record, again, on this application was a summary from Detective Burton, which indicated no violations as far as the Fremont County Sheriff's Department for county regulations are concerned. The detective did make note of some state inspections. And I guess I will just ask the applicant, even though it's not specifically to the purview of this board to consider those, what is the status of your state license?
It is valid. We have had no violations, no write-ups. We are compliant to the law.
And Detective Burton, if you could come to the microphone and just give us an overview of your role with the state on this particular licensee in the past year.
All right. I spoke with Detective Elliott. He's one of the state MED investigators. And he advised me that there are two pending, I believe it's two pending violations right now. One for having a, placing all the marijuana trim from like five different licenses into one area. So that's pending administrative action right now. And also 34 plants being over, on being untacked in their metric system.
Okay, and your indication is from investigator Elliott from the state that if those issues are satisfied, they would be in compliance?
Yeah, pending the hearing right now, it's pending. So until the state makes the decision, it's unknown what they're going to do.
All right, and I think the point that we need to make as a board is that, as I said at the outset, we don't specifically consider the types of issues at the county level that the state considers from the Department of Revenue in its enforcement of medical marijuana licenses. But the fact of it is, is if they don't have a state license, if somehow violation at the state level results in forfeiture of that license, they lose their county license, so.
But it's unlikely with these types of violations, it's unlikely that they're going to lose their state license.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Detective.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant or the department? I guess going back to some of the record that we saw on the Code Enforcement complaints back in June and the initial reaction, and I can't remember who specifically was quoted in the Code Enforcement report, was that at that time the odor mitigation controls were only operating intermittently rather than 24 hours because of excessive water use? Was that...
Well, no, it wasn't from excessive water use. The original design that we had for the odor mitigation was to be on a cycle timer where it would kick on, you know, for one minute, shut off for five, one minute, shut off for five, and it was ineffective, so we decided to, because, you know, we want to be compliant with all the neighbors and make everybody happy. So we ended up setting it up on our grow system to where it kicks on when the fans, and we can kick it on 24 hours a day if there's any problem. The last thing we want is to have unhappy neighbors.
I think the thrust of that report was that, back in June, correct me, Matt, if I'm wrong here, but the thrust of that was that if there's an odor problem, then the system needs to be running 24 hours and management shouldn't be selective as to when they turn it on or off. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And we can do that as well if that's what the board needs me to do. I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, and I guess that was your opportunity to clarify after that point was made by the Code Enforcement officers that you need to be running it all the time, what steps were taken after they told you that?
That's when we set it up. So if we let the system run for 24 hours a day, it would be ineffective because there's no air going through the fans themselves to clean the odor out. The only time it becomes effective is when odor is transferred through the fan ports and it's mixed with the odor. So I guess by running it 24 hours a day, it's just ineffective, but I'd be happy to do that.
Well, what if you even speeded up the process, you know, rather than waiting two minutes to have it go at every minute or, you know, setting up the sequence?
Well, now it comes on. Anytime that the fans kick on, it's not on a cycle timer anymore. That's how we first, how it was first operational. When we started receiving complaints, that's when we have it kicking on every time air is passed through the greenhouse themselves. Oh, yeah, that's the step that we took that we reacted to is having it kick on anytime there's air moved through the fans themselves.
So it turns into more reactionary than, you know, it reacts to the heat rather than being proactive, trying to stop it before it gets to a certain point?
Well, it's, clarify your question again?
Well, it sounds like, you know, it's reacting to the heat, and so there could be a time in there where the heat's just not high enough, but yet it's still impacting the outside. You know, you're reacting to a certain level. Can you set that reactionary level lower so it reacts more to what's going on?
So what I would have to do is lower the temperature in the greenhouse because, so for example, there's a sensor inside the greenhouse, and I set it up to where I wanted to maintain 74 to 78 degrees. That's what I want to... that's what I want the inside temperature to be. So as soon as the air temperature rises above seventy-eight, it kicks on fans, which brings outside air through the greenhouse and, and pulls, uh, pulls air through a wet wall, which is a cooling, it's our, our environmental controls. So if I were to lower it to a lower level, it's still gonna do the same thing as it would if I, if it was set to a higher temperature, does that make sense?
It does, but then if you set it to a lower, uh, higher temperature, or what have you, it would turn on quicker and more often, correct?
The fans would, would kick on, uh, more often, yes. But in the summertime, they basically run twenty, almost, well, during every, every, uh, from sunup to sundown.
So when, when is the, the, the highest potency of smell coming from your plants? What season, what months are we looking at there?
Well, because we have, our, our greenhouses are not, they're not seasonal, they're light preparation, so they close, and you can, um, limit the amount of light that the plants, um, get, so we have a perpetual harvest. Um, so there's not a, a typical month or time of the year that the odor's gonna be stronger, it's more the plant's life cycle.
So in, in reference to the outdoor grow to the north of you, they wouldn't be growing it this time because of the cold, so...
Yeah, they just cut, so their, their, their strongest smell would be probably June to August. Then, I don't know when they cut, I haven't really watched them, it could have been later, it could have been, um, earlier, but that's when the strongest smell would be coming, uh, and the people were probably smelling was in the later parts of fall.
Okay, 'cause we, per the letter we received from Claire, that there, there was, there was noticeable odor as late as two days ago.
Two days ago?
So, um...
We don't even have any plants right now in late flowering, and not saying that it's not from us, but, um, it possibly could be there's three different grows that surround our house, I don't know, biker town if you did one of them, and then the outdoor one, which I'm sure they probably don't have plants left in there at this point.
Yeah, per the, per the letter we received, January fifth, uh, between the times of four-thirty and six P.M. is when the odor was noticed.
Okay.
Well, I, I think this exchange points up an ongoing concern if, if the department gets complaints, and, and I understand the difficulty, because we may not know the origin of the odor. And this is an obvious, i- if he says there's no plants, then it points up immediately that question, you know, is the or- is the odor today, or in recent days, or even other periods of the year emanating from some other location? And, uh, and I know it's difficult even to go out there in June or July, and if everybody's growing as to where the source of the odor is, so...
What, what do you mean now that there's no plants?
Well, I...
Just in flowering stage?
Can I say there's no plants in, in the greenhouse that I suspected that the majority of the odor to be coming from at this point? Not ours, the place that's across the street, I believe it's on H Street. Um, what I'm, what I was saying is, we don't have any plants at this point that are in late flowering, that have the strong odor, uh, within three to four weeks we will, we only have two rotations going out there right now.
Okay.
So when, when did the change actually take place from the way you were running your system to now?
Upon my first complaint.
Which would have been in June?
Uh, I believe it was June.
Somewhere around, around that timeframe?
I believe it was around June twenty-ninth, we sent the letter to them regarding that.
And every inspection that we had prior to that putting in effect based on that we haven't had any of the, the noticeable odor coming from our facility.
Okay, um, I, I'm, feel like we're kind of treading in, in some deep water. We're not mechanical engineers, and it's really, I don't think, um, up to us to tell you how to operate your system, other than to just remind you that you do need to be a good neighbor out there.
Of course, and that's really what we want to do. If there's anything that we can do, uh, uh, above what we're already doing, I'd be happy to comply.
Okay, clarify for me once again for the record, Angela Morton is the owner?
Yes, sir.
Natalie Ramel is the manager or director?
Manager, director, yeah.
And your role again with the...
Facility, I'm the facility manager.
Okay. And how often are either of them on site?
Um, Natalie is on site once a week, I'm there every day.
Okay. Anything else from the board?
I have a motion, if you're ready.
I am ready.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve OPC fourteen dash zero zero one for today's healthcare, um, doing business as today's healthcare two, with the following, um, items. That must be provided prior to the issuance of the license. Compliance with all of the Fremont County Building Material Outstanding, Building Department. Outstanding items as noted by Don Moore. Um, make certain that you keep odor mitigation running and consistently operating. Proof that all of your occupational licenses are valid and up to date, and a copy of that detailed plan for training of employees and staff.
Second. I have a motion and a second, with the conditions and stipulations as outlined by Commissioner Bell. Other discussion? Roll call?
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Payne?
Aye.
Commissioner Norden?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and I guess, uh, goes without saying that, uh, based upon the questions from this board, uh, you understand the importance that we place on the odor mitigation as well as our code enforcement officers throughout the year.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And just one quick question, have you visited the site on H Street, are you aware of that greenhouse?
On H Street, which one is that?
Uh, it's, there's two greenhouses, it's, it's right by the, the lady that's been complaining.
Yes, we have, we've visited, visited several times.
And how is odor mitigation working on there, and what are you guys doing to enforce that?
There is no enforcement on an outdoor grow.
There's none, huh?
No.
That was, that was the point that I made, that it's, it's, it's difficult for neighbors to sort out, as well as difficult for our code enforcement to sort out.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Last on the agenda is an OPC fourteen day zero zero two, High Mountain Meds, doing business as Levity Wellness, located at three thousand County Road one oh three, south of Florence. South, about three miles southwest from Highway sixty-seven and County Road one oh three. And representing is Ryan Foster.
That is correct.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Morning.
Want to give us, uh, an overview of, uh, your application, and this, and, and maybe particularly for yours, if this, if you give us a status of what you've accomplished on site since you were initially licensed?
As far as meeting conditions to...
Or just getting in operation?
We, we have been in operation, we are a seasonal, we only, we only grow in summer. Um, currently haven't had any, uh, violations or investigations. I don't, we don't have any complaints that I know of, we're very secluded where we grow, so not any neighbors or anything like that.
Excuse me, can you speak up just a little bit, please? Thank you.
Yeah. So as of now, I think, uh, I think we are, no violations or anything like that, I think our business is in good standing with the state as well as the county.
Okay, Matt?
All right, they did make applica- application for renewal, did submit, uh, the necessary requirements for the application. Code enforcement did visit the site, uh, there are no violations, no, there were no, uh, concerned citizens commenting on it. Um, the required conditions, uh, contingencies, originally, they had to do a, a copy of a cer- certificate of occupancy, certificate of completion, or a certificate of compliance from the Fremont County Building Department. Uh, the use of the recreational trailer in conjunction with the operation shall be in compliance with all zoning regulations, and documentation from the Fremont County Environmental Health Officer as to use of a proper installation of an onsite water treat, water, wastewater treatment system. After review, we do have, uh, four items of consideration or contingencies that will need to be taken care of, uh, prior to the issuance of the license. Uh, the first one is to provide valid occupational licenses for all employees or staff. Uh, provide valid state license for center associated with the OPC, the provided license four oh two dash zero zero two four two expired seven-ten of two thousand fifteen. Uh, number three is a copy of certificate of occupancy from the building department for the greenhouse structure. The structure is still intact, you did remove the cover on it, but the frame is still there.
That's right, we spoke to the building department and all of the forms, we've done the engineering, and the drainage study, and the retention pond, all of that's complete, and we dug a well, and they say we need to have a commercial well, so we're working on augmentation plan for the well, other than that, all the, the fees and everything for the, the permit have been paid, everything's done except for the augmentation of the well. So that's, that's the step we're on for completion of that.
Okay, so we'll still need that certificate from them, once you do get all that completed?
And we've taken down the greenhouse until we, until we actually need to take them, that's the reason why we took the class to call.
Okay, the building department still looks at it as a, as a structure, so you still have to consider that as part of your building permit, so... Um, and then the last one is provide proof of restrooms and wash facilities. The RV cannot be used as a residence or a restroom facility. Um, I did see in the file that you did complete a septic system on site?
That's correct.
But it's not hooked up to anything?
It's, it isn't, this is, just got done with the septic, we've got the well, and what we've done, I, I submitted paperwork, we've got a contract with a porta potty company for a porta potty and wash station, and that's gonna be from May until November. So we have that while we're building the house up there that we're gonna be using for the restroom and septic.
Okay.
So the land's cleared, it's just, I'm, I'm building the house by myself, so it's taken a lot of time.
Okay, other than that, we don't have any issues?
You'll continue to haul all of the water and use no well water for the cultivation?
Yes, we actually have a contract through, uh, the Water Guide in Florence, and got it approved through the Division of Water Resources, and they, we, they track all of the water that we, uh, purchase and gets delivered to our property.
So was there security on site twenty-four hours while the growing season was underway?
There is, even when it's not underway, we have full camera surveillance as well as a alarm system.
But, but whoever was on site was not actually residing in the RV?
That's correct, nobody lives up there. The RV is not in use for anything right now.
Well, during the growing season, is it in use for any living quarters?
No, it is not.
Okay, other questions for Matt or the applicant?
I don't think so.
You, uh, are in an area that tends to not invite much complaints, I'm guessing?
Yes, but we don't see anybody, so that makes it very uncomfortable.
And we thank you for that.
How often has code enforcement been on this site?
Uh, two or three times.
Two or three.
And that's mainly for the review of the application process.
Okay.
It's tough to get up there.
Do you want to entertain a motion?
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'll, uh, have a motion. Motion that we, uh, approve OPC fourteen dash zero zero two, High Mountain Meds, doing business as Levity Wellness, with the following items. Number one, provide val- valid occupational license to all employees and staff. Provide state license for the, uh, the OPC. Copy of cert- certificate of occupancy from the Fremont County Building Department for your greenhouse, and then the proof of restrooms and wash facilities.
Uh, before I second that, I have, I have a quick question, I guess, uh, Commissioner Payne? First of all, we do have the proof of restrooms and wash facilities, so...
Actually, we do, yeah, I just now realized that.
That does not need to be a contingency?
I don't need that last one.
Okay, and I would ask if you would be willing to entertain, um, a deadline to be in compliance with the building department of perhaps ninety days, because we want to see this get done, we don't want to let it go for another year and say, well, we're still working on it?
Yeah, uh, I'll go along with that, ninety days.
Well, just, why don't you just state a date? Or, well, I guess that's a...
Okay, I'll second.
All right, motion and second, uh, to approve with that, uh, ninety day additional stipulation to be in compliance.
Is that clear as mud for you guys?
Clear as mud.
Okay.
Other discussion? Roll call?
Commissioner Payne?
Aye.
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Norden?
Aye.
Motion carries.
For the record, how many other licensees, licenses do we have coming up for renewal that have to be set for special meeting?
I believe we have, it'll be, I think, nine.
Nine more?
Yeah.
All right, and I said special meeting, they wouldn't have to be, but that's been the way this board has operated in the past. And we have not scheduled any of those for any future meetings as of now. There being no further business to come before the board on this special meeting for licensing of medical marijuana, we stand adjourned.
The problem that we have is, we have our own staff also going out and checking time after time after time.